In honor of the Fourth of July, I'm ahead of myself, thanks to whoever left me the new gavel. With that, Ms. Bister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingo.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you very much. We have several board and commission interviews today. We're going to start with Lee Williams for the Park Board. Welcome up, Lee.
Hello.
Hi there. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this?
Okay, well, I actually have been here in Spokane since 1981, so I feel like Spokane is my hometown. But if you ask me where I went to high school, it wouldn't be in Spokane, so I'm getting ahead of that question. I really have developed over my career a real love and passion for creating systems and spaces for children and families that are healthy and that provide what they need, not what I might think they need, but what they tell me they need. And what I've seen in applying for the Park Board is that, you know, I can add that element of my experience doing that. Also, I have been in the nonprofit world, on and off, for about 30 years, or give or take a few. So I'm very familiar with management. I was the CEO of Community-Minded Enterprises before retiring at the end of 2022. So I really saw, when I retired, that I was not done, that there was more that I thought that I could do to help my community. And I became involved in the Browns Edition Neighborhood Council and the Friends of Coeur d'Alene Park, and it was a whole new area for me, but I just dove in and wanted to learn everything there was to learn about parks. Because that's the way I learn things, that's the way I operate, is to find out everything I can find out and then listen to people and have them tell me, you know, what their needs are and move forward with that. So that's why I applied for the Park Board. Another reason was I was selected to be on the Development Volunteer Community Advisory Council. And in that work, I saw that there were other parks with some of the same, in other neighborhoods with some of the same issues coming up for them and really saw the the ability to move forward altogether as opposed to I have issue here in Coeur d'Alene Park or somebody has one in Audubon. There's just so many things that are alike across the park system right now. And I really believe in our neighborhood parks and in continuous improvement. Not just do something and then rest and do something and rest, but always be looking at how we can make things better and better.
Yes.
Figuring this out. So I've been our Park Board liaison for four years, and there are a couple big issues facing parks right now on our end, a couple big ordinances, as a matter of fact, that will be voted on next week, so. Do you think that people should be able to camp in parks overnight?
No.
Okay. And what would be that limit?
I don't know that I understand the question. I guess the limit, I'll answer and then see if I'm really answering your question. For me, I live right across the street from the park, and so I see everything that goes on in Coeur d'Alene Park. It's not very big. We have had problems with people camping there. And we call 311 and they come, and we've had the hot team come out and take care of those issues. However, during the day, when people need to rest and relax in the shade, they should have the ability to do that. You know, get their, get all their things together, be in the shade, rest, relax, be rejuvenated. And what I see is they generally move on when it gets to be evening. And that's what parks are for. Parks are for everyone. So did I answer that for you?
That answered it, thank you.
Is there anyone else before Councilmember Bingo asks his second question? I have one for you, Lee, and being from Browns Edition myself, and the outreach that neighborhood has done with the park, because Browns Edition embraced, basically adopted, the park.
Yes.
Do you have any ideas or thought about how other neighborhood councils could possibly follow that path of adopting or taking back their park or loving on their park?
Actually, I do. Because I was the chair of the DVCAC, I have been meeting with some of-
Which means what?
The Development Volunteer.
Thank you.
Yes. That's why it's an acronym. I have been meeting, I've met with Shiloh Hills, I've met with Audubon, and I have another meeting with Lincoln Park people to talk about just those issues. I sent out an email to everybody and I said, I would, I'm new chair, I would really like to learn about your neighborhood, I really like to learn about your parks, would you allow me to come and speak with you? And I got great response to that. And so I've been going out and I've been talking to them and learning. And then our great volunteer brochure that we have, I can talk with them about Adopt a Park, if they just want to pick up garbage and take care of their park that way. Or the benefits to being a Friends group, which then gets you a park liaison and then more you with the city and much more say-so about what may be going on in your park. Yeah, sure.
Councilmember Bingo, go ahead.
I love hearing you talk about the Friends of groups. I think they're great organizations that help adopt particular areas. So I'm excited to hear you talk so fondly of those.
I love them.
I hope we get more that continue to sprout up throughout the city. And so my second question is, do you think that we should designate certain portions of our park as non-public?
By non-public, could you define that for me a little bit more?
So we have an ordinance that'll be coming forward next week that would allow us to take portions of the park and designate them as non-public so as to restrict access potentially by law enforcement or ICE or something along those lines.
Just in hearing your short explanation of it, I would have to say I have a positive response to it because of what I'm seeing in the news about, especially about immigration and having, you know, ICE just be able to barge into and go into anywhere is concerning. I think that's concerning no matter who it is, I might say. It's not just immigration. It could be, it could be anything. But I would really like to know more before I really formed an opinion about that. You know exactly where it would be, you know, what would the parameters be about it? What happens if it doesn't work? Do we have the ability to adjust it or make it fit?
I have one more. How do you feel about zip lines?
I think they're fabulous and I don't want to do one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and coming to visit with us. Nothing else will be required of you. We'll be voting two weeks, I think on the 23rd or 30th.
Okay.
And then you'll hear back from the mayor's office.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you and especially asking questions. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We also have two people here for the Ethics Commission, and I'm going to start with Rockwell Rutter. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me in today.
Same questions. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Sure. So I'm Rockwell Rutter. I have been a Spokane resident for my entire life. Everything that I have in my life that I love, I got from this city. And I have spent my whole life focusing on me and my family and building up my business. And I am now at a point where I'm ready to give back. Why the Ethics Commission? I think that any organization, if it's going to be worth anything, needs to have a solid foundation, and I think ethics is that. As a public organization like a city, we owe it to the citizens to be accountable and fair and open and transparent. And I really want to be a part of doing that.
All right, well, what high school did you graduate from?
West Valley.
All right, that's all good. Any other questions? Councilmember Bingo?
My mom is a West Valley girl, but what is the, what's your business?
I own DistilleryUniversity.com. It's online and in-person education for people that want to start craft distillery businesses.
Very cool. We can do a workshop on that. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thank you so much for applying and, yeah, your engagement. Just something that's kind of come up recently from some constituents related to the Ethics Commission is walking that fine line, I think, between transparency and then also a concern that if the process was potentially abused, if someone was filing frivolous complaints and everything gets sort of posted in the city records, so you look at the person, that's one of the first things that sort of comes up. So how do you kind of balance, I think, a little bit of that transparency with also that intake of what might be something that is weaponized?
Well, I think if the commission were to have a bunch of complaints being filed that just didn't smell right, I think it's on the commission to talk amongst themselves and think, hey, is there something wrong here? You know, should we bring someone else into this conversation? Because this isn't normal activity. It's not the sort of thing that you keep yourself.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingo?
Yes, and what, what sort of qualifications do you have to sit on the Ethics Board?
Being self-employed my whole life, I am confronted with decisions each and every day, sometimes that affect a great deal of people, sometimes only me. Sometimes there are decisions that I make that I could take advantage of a situation if I wanted to. I don't do that. I was brought up to have a sense of right and wrong, and that has served me very well professionally. And with, gosh, a couple decades of experience doing that and no problems, I think, I think I've proven I have it. And actually, I haven't been pulled over since I was 20 years old.
That's great. One more, Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, one more, just quick comment, but thank you for applying and appreciate you being here.
Of course.
Thank you. And really thank you for stepping up and serving this.
All right.
It's a very much needed commission, especially in the work that we do up here. All right, nothing else is required of you. You'll be hearing from us soon. And again, thank you for wanting to serve and thank you for loving your city.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.
We have one more, Dennis. Dennis Looney, come on down. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello there. Again, just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Sure. I've been in Spokane for three and a half years. My wife and I moved here. Since that time, I've ingratiated myself in the community. I volunteer with multiple Spokane-specific nonprofits to engage in different aspects, whether it's environmental or LGBTQI-plus youth. My background, to give you a reason why I wanted to apply for this, I was over 10 years in human resources, working for a variety of higher education institutions, whether private or public. The public ones were North Seattle College, so I dealt with Washington State employees. We had, I was HR generalist, responsible for about 300 to 400 employees. In that time, as well as I was at Oregon State University, we worked not only with the students, employees, but also the general public. So my job in a lot of instances was to engage with individuals from all dynamic walks of life, from someone off the street to someone who has specialized in their career path for 30 or 40 years. After I worked in higher ed, I went to work for two tech companies. I got to the highest level individual contributor role I could take. I realized that this is a career path I was good at, but I frankly just didn't want to do for the rest of my life. So I took about time to figure out what I may like, and then I landed on something that's still similar to some degree is counseling. And I will be starting my master's in science in clinical mental health counseling at Eastern Washington University this September.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any questions? Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, just asked the same question. So just kind of how you sort of walk that line between having transparency that openness to the public, but then also knowing that there is the potential for complaints that are going to the Ethics Commission to be potentially weaponized or that process to be abused.
Sure. I mean, the reality is even when I worked in human resources, right, you have to balance it. And since we were a public institution for two organizations I worked for, a lot of those could be records requests and pull that information, which led to sometimes challenging situations, especially if there was already conflict or when you're dealing with the union specifically. The reality is, I think, in those instances, if someone's intentionally doing that, first, you need to have background and context, why, who, what, where, right? There needs to be understanding before taking any action. And based on that action, basically look at the Spokane Municipal Code that's already in existence, see if it's right, see if this is a test or flex to see if it's actually functionally working, and then try to adapt it. The reality is, is if the opportunity to people to bring their complaints, I think, is valid, that's one of the reasons I want to work with this, but also trying to find that minutia of if those complaints are against an employee, right, does that go to the staffing director to address? How do we work that, each individual situation to a way that we're respecting all parties, but not letting a situation work that's only going to inhibit distrust or discomfort or even a fear of slander of an individual?
Right, thank you. Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, working off the back of that, you know, while we're employees in some regards, we're also not employees, we're elected officials. And so for people in our situation, how do you walk that line then? Where it's like, there should be a way for people to complain, right? There should be a pathway for that. But complaint against somebody like us versus, you know, an employee is somewhat different, so what do you, how would somebody be able to do that for us?
Sure. I think where the challenge lies is you still want to be able to always have the idea of accountability for your role, but also making it sure, like you're saying, that feels like an attack on an individual that's not being productive or, or actually feeling like you're moving forward in any kind of tangible way. I think that's a really hard question to answer in the sense that I don't think I could definitively say what I would say either way. I always pause, go back to HR. If I don't know the answer fully, better to pull back all your information than respond in a more accurate manner. But I think there needs to be a balance to ensure that people in any elected official roles are able to engage with the public, but also not to have that balance of we're making sure that we're using our resources of the city in an effective manner and not using, having to use those resources in a way that is not productive for all parties.
Thank you. Councilmember, anyone else? Councilmember Bingo?
In situations where you may have a conflict, how do you choose, how do you recuse yourself?
I mean, if the conflict is apparent, then I would reach out right away. The timeliness is urgent because any lingering or delay can seem as that there's an intentional reason why I'm denying. Realistically, since this is something that I'm doing of my own choice and I'm not paid, and I'm doing this as well as being a student, to me, it's easy enough for me just to step back and be like, hey, I don't have any other conflicts that would, or if there was conflict, easily enough for me to step away. The reality is, there's already five board members. If another two are elected or more, you already have enough to move forward, so it's easy enough for me to be able to step back and say, hey, there's conflict. Just let me know when the next step is for the next complaint coming in or advisory opinion or contract concern.
Dennis, what made you move to Spokane? You've been here three and a half years.
I think it's a mix. I came to visit friends that live here. My wife has family here. But the reality, it's a small city that hits all those pieces. I've lived in multiple cities, six different states, so I've had an experience of living in big and small environments, and this is kind of a nice mix. There's an airport I can get to. I love the Spokane Symphony. I actually was one of the reasons why I like the city. There's music, arts, entertainment, but I also think it's a city that is continuing to grow. I wanted to be in an environment that I saw a city thriving and continuing to adapt to the needs as well as the population that's currently here. And also, I've, just to be frank too, it was more affordable comparatively to other places, so it gave me the ability to actually afford to buy a house here. And that gave me a feeling of connected to this one, this city. And even when I graduate, I don't plan to leave, so I know this is a three-year term, so I would actually be done. But the reality is, I really love this city and it's something that every time I'm here and more I engage with different organizations or different events, I feel more and more connected.
Thank you so much for stepping up and wanting to volunteer your time. Nothing else is required of you. I'm sure you'll be hearing from the administration soon. And we look forward to all of our board and commission members. Again, thank you for willing to serve.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Yes.
If I could just ask, make a request, I wonder if it would make sense for us to have a study session on this topic. This is the first I'd heard concerns about weaponization of our ethics code and, and how we would potentially deal with that. And so I think a study session would be, make a lot of sense.
Thank you, Councilman McCathcart. That's a great idea, and we will work with Jacoba to get that set up as soon as possible. All right, so there's nothing to be briefed on. Mr. Scott stepped away, so seeing that, I'm going to kick it over to our policy director, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, there are no prospective changes to tonight's agenda or to the agenda for June 23rd. Just two items to consider for June 16th. The first is Councilmember Cathcart has filed a proposed amendment to 36699 relating to small-scale commercial development and PUDs. And so that would require a motion and second to have it considered.
Yeah, I will so move the amendment to C36699.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Want to speak to it, Councilmember?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so this just updates section A1B predominantly, yeah, entirely. And essentially just adds some more flexibility to what's being proposed in this code. And Spencer's here and he can kind of delve into a little bit more.
Yeah, I think you could speak to details. Councilmember Cathcart reached out and was interested in providing some additional flexibility. I worked with him to review what he was thinking, make sure that it didn't create any problems from the standpoint of the way our code works or any of the, you know, concerns that he may not have anticipated. The administration doesn't really have a position on, you know, whether any of these changes are necessary or important, nor does it oppose. I think it's really up to council to just make a decision about. We've kind of set the levers, so now council can pull the levers and set them to where they want them to be. That's kind of how I see this.
The biggest changes are, instead of, I think it's 50 acres originally, it's now 20 acres that you would be required for this. It's, instead of a max of 3,500, it would be 5,000 square feet. It also removes the, the idea that outdoor seating would be counted towards that square footage. I think there might be a couple other little smaller modifications, but that's the biggest.
Those are the ones that I can recall, yes.
You have the council commentary on that? Councilmember Bingo, then Councilmember Klitsky, and then Councilmember Dillon?
I just want to say thanks for standing up for outdoor dining.
Councilmember Bingo?
Billen.
Bingo, Dillon, Bingo.
Billen.
Ooh, it's hot.
That's right. No, I like the changes. You know, the, the whole idea behind this in the beginning was, you know, it's sort of the era of the side hustle where, you know, as inflation is happening, people might need to do a little bit more on the side. And hopefully what that ends up becoming is, you know, a full-fledged business, if that's what they so choose, hopefully they're successful enough. And for new startup businesses, there's not a lot of money early on for businesses that start with zero capital. And so getting a lease or those kinds of things can be quite expensive and quite daunting, but if you're able to do it out of your home, obviously, then, you know, it reduces a lot of barriers to entry in the marketplace. And so I really like it. I would, I would like us to, to keep that in mind as we're going forward, that again, most self-employed folks bring in less than $2,000 a month in sales. And so it is not most people's full-time job, it's just a way that they bring in some extra money for their family. And so making that as easy as possible, I think, is a good thing for us in the city.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thanks for bringing this forward. I think these are very welcome changes and really appreciate the innovative thinking. I'm just curious, and Spencer, I know this, is this kind of comparative to some other jurisdictions? Or are we kind of just a new, blazing some trails here?
I guess, is your question about the, the numbers, like sort of the magnitude of things, or is it the concept overall?
Adding the scale, the outdoors, you know, seating, for example.
I would guess it's all over the map. Just to be clear, the outdoor seating thing, if you look further on in the code, we sort of just took the provisions that applied in the RMF and RHD zones and used them in the R1 and R2 zones. So that's why that, I mean, there's nothing special about outdoor seating that we felt it needed to be there. It was really just kind of, let's, let's keep what's in the code and apply it. I don't, so I don't, I don't think other jurisdictions probably address outdoor seating, and I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure where their, where their size requirements, it's probably all over the map. We didn't really do any heavy research into what other jurisdictions did.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would just say, I think, frankly, I wanted to go a little further with some of these. And just, there are limits, just because of the way the comp plan is written and some of the language there. And so there is potential that this could be increased once we've adopted the comp plan updates and, and make some further changes for, for these pieces. But this was sort of, kind of a compromise of where we felt like, okay, the, the comp plan language can allow for, for sort of this level of intensity without going, going too far, I guess.
So I would ask, I'm just trying to get my head around it, whereas, tell me the opportunities that we could implement this in the city. Give me, somebody give me an example of what that might look like.
Do you want to?
I mean, essentially, you could have a mixed-use development. I mean, essentially, you could have a mixed-use development where you've got, you know, it could be a fitness center on the bottom floor. It could be a cafe, it could be whatever. And essentially, this change just allows that that can occur within a PUD that is 20 acres or larger in size, whereas the version that's on the agenda right now says it has to be 50 acres. And if you go through and you look at the mapping, I mean, there's just not a lot of 50-acre sites that even exist. And so the idea that, that we would really get a good outcome, I think, is kind of limited. And this would at least expand the opportunities. And then the 5,000, it just, 3,500 felt like it was just a smidge too small. And so that was the, kind of the motive behind moving it to 5,000. But, but yeah, essentially it would allow mixed uses, it would allow incorporating even as a standalone within the PUD, a, some sort of a small business retail type site.
Councilmember Bingo?
And where it would actually be implemented, you know, you'd probably be seeing it again in the, in the areas where there would be a lot of new development, obviously not your, your infill type stuff. And so I would imagine sort of in that Latah area, as that's all getting built out, it would, it would allow for the developers out there, I think, to have a little bit more creative freedom to, to build, you know, many neighborhoods with cafes and things like that as opposed to what they can do now.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? That is approved. All right, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council. One more item. There is a proposed amendment to OPR 2025-0418 relating to the Tourism and Arts and Cultural Awards. Looks like Mr. Deese is up here to explain the amendment, so.
Yeah, hi, Council. This amendment doesn't change any of the awards or anything like that. We had a meeting, myself, Mr. Wright, Councilmembers of Pone and City Legal, to talk about some of our minute-tracking responsibilities with this committee and some of the responsibilities that I had to keep track of some of that stuff a little bit better. So this would replace what was originally in the OPR with the minutes from our last meeting that detail, you know, any conflict of interest. There was a recusal of one of the awards because one of the applicants was also a committee member. And keeping track of who voted on what, reflecting that Councilmember of Pone is a non-voting member of the committee, it's kind of, yeah, you are. That was the debate. Okay. Still, I guess, debate on that, but. Any other questions on that?
No, I just moved to approve.
Second. Second. Any other commentary? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? That is approved. All right, seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Thank you for that. Please remember, we will be at the MLK Center tonight for our town hall. We will not be in council chambers. We are in recess until 6:00 PM.